At this time, I would like to call the Boy City Council meeting to order. Can we have a call to an roll call, please?
Roll call shows all seven city councilors are present.
Thank you. The second order of business is our pledge of allegiance. Will we all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is special order of the day and announcements. There are none. Item four is public hearings. Item 4A, please.
Item 4A is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor seating area and outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol in the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the properties located at 1426 Richard Street and 1420 Madison Road for the Mouse Tavern. There was a plan commission recommendation for approval, six zero.
Thank you. Staff present, Mrs. Christensen, please.
Thomas Rowell, owner of the Mouse Tavern, has applied for a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor seating area and the outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol on the properties located at 1426 Richard and 1420 Madison Road. Initially, the plan commission reviewed the application, which consisted of a 12 by 16-foot deck. After the plan commission meeting, staff discovered that the alcohol application did not match the conditional use application, and a meeting was called with planning staff, the city clerk, and the owner, and the owner confirmed that the application was for a 12 by 16-foot deck and a 12 by 33-foot fenced grassy area, which would be in front of it towards Madison Road. Therefore, what you have in front of you and is contained in the resolution is the conditional use is for a 12 by 16-foot deck, a 12 by 33-foot fenced grassy area. The deck is proposed to have a capacity of 12 people, and the grassy area is proposed to have a capacity of 12 people for a total of 24 people in all outdoor areas. Included in this packet is a resolution, which has, I think, just one condition in bold and underlined, which is the condition that was added by plan commission at its meeting. And then there are conditions included in italics, which are actually been recommended by staff. Plan commission didn't review those, but those are conditions that were submitted by staff to try to mitigate any effects from the addition of the grassy areas and outdoor seating area. So the conditions that are recommended by plan commission and staff are that this conditional use permit authorizes the establishment of an outdoor seating area and the outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol in that area, provided that all the conditions are met. The outdoor seating area includes a 12 by 16-foot covered deck and the 12 by 33-foot fenced grassy area located on the north side of the tavern building. Prior to the establishment of the conditional uses, the applicant shall amend the liquor license for the premises to include the outdoor seating area, and that is on your agenda tonight. Prior to construction of the deck, walls, roof, and fence, the applicant must obtain an architectural review certificate and a building permit. The deck and walls shall match or complement the existing building materials and architectural design, and the fence shall be at least 50 percent open and no taller than four feet in height. Prior to the establishment of the conditional uses, the applicant shall obtain an area variance to move the property line, allowing these two parcels to continue to function separately or demolish or remove the single-family dwelling located at 1420 Madison Road and combine the two parcels to create one zoning lot, or combine the two parcels to create one zoning lot and allow the dwelling structure on Madison Road, 1420 Madison Road, to be used only for the storage of materials accessory to the tavern use. All trash and recycling containers, including grease traps, shall be enclosed in accordance with the Architecture Review and Landscape Code. Music may not be played in the outdoor seating area after 10:00 PM. The outdoor seating area shall not be used for outdoor seating under the outdoor sale possession and consumption of alcohol between the hours of 12:00 AM and 11:00 AM. The maximum capacity shall be 24 persons. The maximum capacity shall be posted inside the building and within the outdoor seating area, and the door leading to the outdoor seating area shall be marked as an exit. The fence portion of the outdoor seating area shall include an emergency exit gate featuring panic hardware. The door or gate shall be at least three feet wide, and a clear path between the building door and emergency exit shall be maintained. The applicant shall provide a visible and/or audible fire alarm within the outdoor seating area. The applicant must install wheel stops or concrete curbing along the west side of the parking spaces east of the building and outdoor seating area to protect patrons from possible vehicle accidents. The existing chain-link fence located on the north, south, and east sides of the building located on 1420 Madison Road must be removed. Dispensing is not necessary to enclose a storage building, and such fencing reduces the visual appeal of the property. And our standard condition, that major conditions come back through this process, and that staff may approve minor changes administratively. And I think included in your packet is a drawing by staff showing the full amount of the outdoor seating area, the covered deck, and then the fenced grass area.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 4A? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item 4A, resolution authorizing a conditional use permit for an outdoor seating area? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing at this time, and is there a motion from council? It's a motion by Johns. Is there a second? Second by Noonan. Counselor discussion? Counselor DeForest?
Yes, I have some questions, Ms. Christensen. I went off to the site to take a look yesterday and spoke with the tenant who's currently residing at 1420 Madison Road, and I'm just wondering if you've heard from the owners which of the two options they're considering. Are they considering combining the two parcels or demolishing the existing building?
Five C was added at the request of the owner, so my sense is he is going to combine the two parcels to create one zoning lot and allow the dwelling structure to be used only for storage.
Okay, and what mechanisms or measures can we take to be sure that he doesn't continue to use that building as a rental unit?
I honestly, I mean, we could just drive by and verify that no one's living there. We could check utility, I mean, we can check utility records to the level to which the storage should not use a lot of water.
Okay.
I mean, we do have-
The tenant didn't seem to have any sense that she was moving out anytime soon, so I'm just making sure that the owner seems to have a sense that truly he needs to actively allow him to maintain this dwelling structure, that it cannot be used for residential purposes.
If I had to guess, I'm guessing he didn't take any action until he saw what you guys did tonight. I mean, I haven't talked to him, so I don't know that, but that would be my guess.
I also have another question about, because currently the way the structure is built, it meets our definition of an enclosed space, and I saw there were some changes suggested to those. Does the owner understand the importance of making the changes to the existing seating area as it is, as it currently exists? It does not meet state law and our ordinances for enclosed space?
He has been notified of that. He does have to go through architectural review and the building permit process, so, I mean, we will work through that with him.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Counselor Vandemogart.
Ms. Christensen, you read the conditions that the staff recommended, and it may have just have been a misstatement, but on condition eight, the maximum capacity of the outdoor seating area shall be, it's listed here as 12. You said 24. Was that simply a misstatement?
It should be 24. It's on the resolution?
On-
Are you looking at the staff report?
I'm looking at the staff recommendation.
That was because the addition of the fenced grassy area was an additional 12 people. So the resolution says 24.
Okay, I didn't-
I was saying, I printed it out, I had, so I wasn't sure where you were looking.
All right, thank you. Counselor Johns.
Ms. Christensen, can you refresh my memory, please? The rental property that's on Rich, Richard and the tavern are on the same lot?
Yes.
And that's okay?
It was nonconforming, a condition that has existed prior to-
So the three parcels couldn't, I mean, the three buildings couldn't be put into one, though?
You mean, connected to all be one building?
No, not one building, but, I mean, if those two were okay, isn't-
That is a nonconforming condition, so we don't require another lot line just because it's always been that way. He's proposing an action now that would create the condition, so that's why the rules are different. It's a pre-existing condition. We don't go back and try to alter the past, or it actually is considered, usually considered a taking in some sort, so we, existing, pre-existing conditions are allowed to continue, but if you take an action to modify something, then we try to make things right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other counselors? Counselor Adinch?
A question regarding the concern about it continuing to be used as rental property or as a residence. If we added language to condition C that said something to this effect, combine the two parcels to create one zoning lot, relinquish the current rental permit back to the city, and then continue with the language that's there, would that be sufficient, do you think, to ensure that it not be used as rental? Because he's required to have a rental permit to operate it as a residential rental unit. If one condition were to be to relinquish that permit, then I think that would ensure that it could not be used for that purpose.
Tom, do you have any thoughts on that? I don't know if you can relinquish a rental permit, that's why.
Excuse me, yes, I think conceivably a person could relinquish or surrender a rental permit, and that may add some level of comfort and enforceability.
Okay, thank you.
So, would you like to put that into motion?
Yeah, I would move, then, that we amend the resolution to add the following language to items five C, the condition five C, so that my amendment would have that read, or combine the two parcels to create one zoning lot, relinquish the current rental permit that exists to the city, and allow the dwelling structure located at 1420 Madison Road to be used only for storage of materials, accessories, and materials.
Okay. I want to check to make sure that the clerk has that already.
It's pretty close.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second on that motion?
I have a second.
Motion by Counselor, did second by Counselor DeForest. Any counsel discussion on that motion? Counselor Vandemogart.
Aren't the rental permits something they have to obtain every year in any case?
Yes, but they run through February, February, end of February.
Okay, any other counsel discussion or comments on that motion? So we will take the last-
Vote on the motion.
We will vote on this motion that was set forth by counsel. Did all those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it's passed at seven zero. Okay, thank you.
And then vote on the entire as amended.
What she said. They're all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passed. Item 4B, please.
Item 4B is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow a temporary outdoor seating area and temporary outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol in a C3 Community Commercial District for properties located at 53 and 65 Portland Avenue, Klein's Club 88. There was a plan commission recommendation for approval, five one.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen, please.
Kim Eggers, on behalf of Klein's Club 88, applied for the conditional use for this temporary outdoor seating area at 53 and 65 Portland Avenue. The proposal includes two one-day outdoor events. The outdoor seating area will be enclosed by a temporary four-foot tall snow fence, existing chain-link fencing in the east wall of the building. Plan commission did recommend an opening in the gate for access to the outdoor area, and the outdoor area would include tables, food service, and a portable bar. They did recommend approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the resolution, which are that this conditional use permit authorizes two one-day outdoor events in the existing parking lot and open green space located at 53 and 65 Portland Avenue, featuring temporary outdoor seating and temporary outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol in said area. The applicant may hold a total of two similar outdoor events per calendar year, subject to all the conditions contained in the resolution, and the applicant shall notify the planning division of a planned event at least 60 days prior to the date of the event. The outdoor area must be enclosed with temporary snow fencing or temporary chain-link fencing, which must be at least four feet tall. Caution tape or other similar barriers are not permitted. Patrons may only enter the outdoor event area through the Klein's Club 88 building located at 65 Portland Avenue or through a gate or break in the temporary fencing. The applicant shall amend the liquor license for the premises to include the outdoor areas, and I believe that's on your agenda tonight. In the future, each annual liquor license application must include this outdoor area, or the liquor license must be amended each year before an outdoor event featuring alcohol may occur. All planned and future outdoor events governed by this conditional use shall conclude by 8:00 PM. City staff reserves the right to limit capacity if overcrowding becomes a concern during the event, and then the standard condition about any major changes coming back through this process and minor changes being able to be approved administratively by staff.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for item 4B. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 4B? Anyone wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Third and final call, anyone who would like to speak on item 4B? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion from counsel. Motion, motion by Noonan, second by Haynes. Counselor discussion? Counselor DeForest?
Ms. Christensen, could you share with us your thoughts related to the staff's concern? In the staff report, there was concern about the door that was selected for entry to the outdoor event area. Could you share with us what those concerns were?
I don't recall the concern, so I-
Okay.
Could you tell me where that was in here? Because I-
In the staff report, under the fourth bulleted key issue, it says patrons will then be able to enter the outdoor event area from the door on the south side of the building adjacent to Portland Avenue. Planning staff has recommended a condition that requires entry to the outdoor area through the building.
That's just a standard condition that we require for all outdoor seating areas, is that they go through, through the building so that staff can monitor it as it comes through. At plan commission, the applicant requested the ability to have, originally it started as she wanted caution, that caution tape, and when they kind of, when plan commission and when they had this conversation back and forth, a discussion back and forth about it, she had assured them that she would have adequate staff, that the family of the event were going to help, and that she had staff as well, and that they would be watching that area, and the compromise that plan commission came up with was to have fencing, but then they would allow another opening off of the parking lot. And they felt assured, I mean, Heidi can testify to that, assured that she was going to be very careful about that and very conscious of controlling the alcohol flow there, and so they recommended that.
Thank you. So can I ask Heidi that discussion? Did you feel comfortable that the alcohol would be able to be controlled with the way the setup was arranged?
As long as the tape was ruled out, yeah, I think everybody was fine with that, and that they had addressed the concerns of the plan commission for security.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Glad I have one. What was, it was approved five to one. Do you know why the one person voted against it?
He, I think he was a little concerned about the security with the gate.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other counsel comments or discussion? Seeing none, I would, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item 4C, please.
Item 4C is a public hearing to solicit input on the community development, housing, and homeless needs in the city for incorporation in the 2011 Annual Action Plan.
Mrs. Christensen.
Each year, in order to receive our community development block grant funds, we're required to submit an annual action plan to HUD. As part of that process, we are required to have a public hearing, which is an opportunity to identify any needs that they've seen in the community related to community development, housing, public housing, homelessness. You don't take any action on this tonight. We will incorporate it in the plan. We will provide any comments that were made to you as you go into the budget process as part of the staff report to the CDA as they review applications. Included in the packet is a mailed notice that went out to our normal community development block grant mailing list. We did hear from Jeff Hoyt, who couldn't make it tonight, and I just encouraged him to submit those needs in writing so we could incorporate them within the plan, but tonight is just to hold a public hearing to see if anyone's here to identify needs.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing on item 4C. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 4C? Anyone here wishing to speak on item 4C? Third and final call, anyone here speaking, wishing to speak on item 4C? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing at this time, and even though this is on for information or fact finding, is there any counselor that has a discussion on this? Counselor DeForest.
Can I just ask that the counselor receives Jeff Hoyt's written comments, please? Please be indicated. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Vandemogart.
Thank you. Ms. Christensen, at the CDA meeting, there was a discussion about scheduling of time slots for presentations by the various agencies, and I would assume that notices have been sent out or will be shortly in terms of notifying all the various interested parties of the 30th at 4:30?
Applications were just received on Friday at 5:00, but I did get a schedule put together right around like 4:45 today and emailed it out to all the applicants, so they were at least notified of their time slot.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, I would at this time like to close the public hearing section of the agenda and move to item five with the citizens' participation. We've now reached a portion of the agenda where citizens may speak. They may speak on anything that's not directly related to the agenda. We will ask you to limit your comments to at least three minutes. We will not cut you off, and we also ask you to refrain from any personal attacks on any city councilor, staff, or anyone in the forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak on citizens' participation this evening? Anyone like to speak on citizens' participation? Seeing none, I would like to move to item six with this consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any counselor that would like anything removed from the consent agenda this evening? Counselor DeForest.
I would like to request that item C be removed, please.
Item C. Is there anyone else, like another item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of items A, B, D through H. Is there a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda? Motion by Haynes, second by Vandemogart. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passed. One abstent here, one abstent here. Okay. Item 6C, please.
Item 6C is a resolution approving a Class A beer license for Sri Raj LLC, doing business as Liberty Quick and Save, 1407 Liberty Avenue, Siraj V Patel Agent. There was an Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee recommendation for approval of a Class A beer license only. The reason for that is the applicant had applied for a full license, a Class A beer and a Class A liquor, and the alcohol committee has recommended a Class A beer, six zero.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Counselor DeForest, you asked that this item be removed from the consent agenda. Is there a specific question or comment that you would like to discuss at this time? And I think the coun, I think it would be addressed to staff if you have any questions at this time, and I think if we have any questions, I think we would call you down. I assume that you're here for the, oh, that's okay. What we're doing now is just bringing it to the floor for discussion, so you can definitely hear what's going on at that time.
I would like to ask Chief Jacobs if he could share with us, the police department has expressed some concerns with issuing this license, and could you talk about those
Well, the concerns expressed at the liquor commission meeting were over incidents that happened in the past, incidents that brought about sanctions to the business in the past, most recently just a couple of years ago, and then all the way back to 2003 when there was another, another incident. But at this time, after the owners have served their time without a license, the recommendation was, was a cautious one for, for beer.
Can I ask for clarification? If you know, if the offenses that date back, it looks like to 2003, those were under the same owner, is that correct? So we've had several offenses over a period of years? Because you said business, I want to make sure the same owner, for that clarification.
That I'm not aware of. In 2003, there was a sanction for running an improper house selling drug paraphernalia. I believe that the district attorney amended that charge, did not, and did not charge what we issued a citation for.
And that was under this current owner, is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes, it was.
And then there was a denial to renew, and then there was the year-long suspension for selling minors to... Selling to minors twice in a three-week time period, correct?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Any other counselor have any questions or comments? Counsel Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify that, well, I just really question, are any of the individuals that did sell to the minors during that time period still employed by this business?
Well, at the meeting, it was stated that the person that had sold twice was no longer employed there, but that since the applicant is here, you may want to ask them that directly.
Good, please.
Please state your name.
Rishi Patel, R.I.S.H.I., Patel, P.A.T.E.L., 1226 McKinley Avenue. And no, she's not employed anymore.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Counsel DeForest.
I'd like to ask another question if I couldn't. I'm not sure if it's an appropriate staff person to ask, or if I can ask the applicant since he's present.
If you would, go ahead and ask your question. Let me, yeah, let me point it in the right direction. Thank you.
I would like to know what measures have been taken to improve their ability to manage their alcohol sales since these instances have occurred.
Okay, that would be it.
Well, after losing it for a year, we realized how important it is, and we took out all, hopefully, all the bad people employed. And we're putting, me, my mom, and my father are going to put more hours in working with employees to make sure everyone's getting carded.
And what ways are you planning to do that?
Oh, being there with the employee. And anyone under 31, we're going to card, or try, meaning hopefully, trying to figure out if they're under 31, to card them for sure.
I'm guessing you can't be there, though, with your employees all the time? So...
Not all the time.
Specific things are you planning to do?
We really want to re-send them to school, to Black Hawk Tech, and redo the class again for alcohol class.
Is there anything else?
No, I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel DeForest?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselor have any other questions, comments, concerns? Counsel Vandemar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess one concern I would have is this, certainly the words that you say are good and perhaps the intentions are good, but with the history of two or even three violations in the recent past, let me be kind of brutal, why should we believe you this time?
I can't comment on that. I wish I could give you an answer for that. I just want to try it again and see if you could do it again, and if not, then we'll try robust, hopefully. That's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counsel DeForest.
I'd just like to make a comment for this body. Selling alcohol is not selling Pez candy, and so I am concerned that the responsibility that comes with the privilege of this license is not being taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for a motion for item six C, as it states, resolution approving a Class A beer license for beer only for this establishment at 1407 Liberty Avenue. Is there a motion at this time? It's been motioned by Johns, is there a second? Second by Dench. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. If we could have the opposed, I believe it's Counsel DeForest, Counsel Vandemar, Counsel Levy, and Counsel Haynes, am I correct? And Counsel Johns. So, and Counsel Noonan and Counsel Dench are correct? So it fails two to five. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Item seven, ordinances, please.
Item seven A is a proposed ordinance to amend the code of general ordinances of the city of Beloit. I am asking for a first reading and to suspend the rules for a second reading. This is our usual quarterly update to our municipal book of ordinances, which incorporates everything you have enacted in the past quarter and also updates our website.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move that we suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Motion by Vandemar, is there a second? Second by Counsel Haynes. All those in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the rules are suspended. Now to the merits of the case, is there a motion? Is there... Been motioned by DeForest, second by Johns. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven to zero. Item eight, appointments. At their August 9th, 2010 meeting, the Appointment Review Committee nominated the following individuals to serve the city of Beloit in various capacities on various committees. I'm moving these names forward for confirmation by the Beloit City Council this evening. For the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, we have the incumbent Ronald Tilly representing the Rock County Tavern Owners League as an ex-officio member to a regular term expiring June 30th, 2013. Also incumbent Shannon Sharma representing the school district of Beloit as an ex-officio member for their 2010-2011 school year. For Appointment Review Committee, Doris J Forbes, 1709 Calumet Avenue, replacing Tabazine Hessenberger to a term expiring December 31st, 2010. And Jane K Farren, 3473 Fieldcrest Court, replacing Ian Hedges to a term expiring December 31st, 2011. For the Board of Appeals, Randall L Fior, I hope I pronounced it right, 2544 Edwood Drive, replacing Brenda Jensen as first alternate to a term expiring May 31st, 2011. Under the Board of Ethics, Carol Ann Fox, 1607 Crescent Drive, replacing Deb Spindel to a term expiring December 31st, 2012. Equal Opportunities and Human Relations Commission, incumbent Carolyn N Lawrence to a term expiring June 30th, 2013. Incumbent Thomas F Ryan to a term expiring June 30th, 2013. Hedera Guadarama, 1149 Harrison Avenue, replacing Emma Harrell to a term expiring June 30th, 2013. Also Ricardo A Valdez, 1715 Park Avenue, replacing Linda Owens to a term expiring June 30th, 2013. Dennis J Wash, 913 and a half Sherlin Avenue, replacing Alexander J Brower to a term expiring June 30th, 2012. For the Municipal Library Board, Jessica Iverson, 1313 10th Street, replacing Shannon Sharma representing the school district of Beloit as an ex-officio member for the 2010-2011 school year. Also incumbent Lisa McEvitt to a term expiring June 30th, 2013. Jorge A Hernandez, 816 Moore Street, replacing Jean B Haas to a term expiring June 30th, 2013. Barbara A Millsap Marlowe, 650 Adventure Court, replacing Levon Cooney to a term expiring June 30th, 2013. For the Park and Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, Twinkle S Patel, 1826 Riverside Drive, replacing Mike Cotta as a youth representative to a term expiring September 30th, 2010. Is there a motion for approval of the names? It's motioned by Haynes, seconded by Noonan. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the following people that I have read are appointed. And I would also like to announce the following vacancies. For the Board of Appeals, we have one vacancy for an alternate. For the Board of Ethics, we have one vacancy for residents. For Board of Review, we have two vacancies, one as an alternate and one for a resident. Disabled Parking Enforcement Assistant Counsel, five vacancies for residents. Municipal Golf Committee, one vacancy for a youth representative. Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, two vacancies for residents. Traffic Review Committee, two vacancies for residents. And those that are interested in serving, you can go to the city's website, www.ci.bloit.wi.us, or call 364-6600, and they will be happy to assist you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is counselor activities and upcoming events. We'll start with Counsel Vandemar.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank those and give kudos to those who participated a couple weeks ago in the National Night Out. The number of block parties that were held on both the east and west sides was excellent. A number of counselors got to a number of them. I don't know that we got to all of them, but certainly we made an effort, and it was a wonderful night, building community spirit, and it was good to see a lot of folks out. A second point would be the successful return from Scotland of the Beloit Memorial High School Theater Group. As I understand, they've landed, and I'm told that from Ms. Johns, that they landed with the same number of people that they took off with. So that's a successful trip, if nothing else. And the last thing I have this evening is a congratulations to a number of Beloiters who recently competed in a backyard bench and deadlift among the individuals participating, Jennifer Shea, Robert Norman, Brody Norman, our own Sheila DeForest, and a Dale Straight. I added up the amount of weight these five individuals lifted, and I think it came up to a small Volkswagen. But congratulations, Ms. DeForest.
Counsel Dench.
Uh, nothing.
Counsel DeForest.
Oh, great, now that I'm sufficiently purple here. Yes, bench press contests are fun. So I can bench you if I wanted to, Jim. I was able to participate in a number of community events these last couple of weeks. I appreciated the block parties I was able to get to for National Night Out. I had a blast at the street dance. This was bigger and better than ever. I couldn't believe how many people were there. It was fantastic, a chance for our community to really get together, some folks I had seen in a while. So it was really, really positive, fantastic. The music was awesome. I was dancing. It was great. I also was able to attend the Parks, Rec, and Conservation Commission meeting, just as a resident, interested resident, and excited that that commission had discussion about Parks Patrol reinstatement and also about a potential dog park in Beloit's future. So I appreciate that. And I would like to thank Twinkle Patel for stepping up for that youth position on the Parks, Rec, and Conservation Commission that's been vacant for a while. And I really want to encourage another youth to step up and participate in the Municipal Golf Committee. We certainly have a number of budding young golfers and would encourage them to consider applying. We need their voice on those commissions. Thank you.
Counsel Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to congratulate those that participated and also volunteered to make the downtown Beloit celebration a great success this past, two weeks ago, yes, no? It was a lot of fun. I think people had a great time, and so thank you to all those volunteers for making it a great success. And I'd also like to thank the outgoing committee members for their service to this community, as well as the ones that are currently serving, and wish the new ones great success, and we appreciate your dedication. Thank you.
Counsel Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the street dance as well, and I danced also. It wasn't pretty, but I did it. You couldn't help it, the music was great. Heard financially, it was a huge, successful fundraiser, and having a little background in fundraising, very important to know that. So kudos to all of those that pulled it off. And Larry, the flowers look great. So got to put that out there. And theater kids have landed. They are back on American soil after two weeks traveling in London and Edinburgh, Scotland. I believe, from what I hear, they've had the time of their life. Thank you to the Beloit Daily News for putting blogs out there and letting me live vicariously through that. We will be having a thank you community party Sunday afternoon. I don't know the exact hours yet, but it will be Sunday afternoon downtown at Suds because it was the community that made this possible. Those kids wouldn't be over there if it wasn't for the community of Beloit. So please come, stop by. We'll have slideshows. You can hear the kids' stories because by then they'll be rested and be ready to share all their stories. So see you guys Sunday. Thank you.
Counsel Haynes.
With all that's been said, I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay. Just a couple of things for me. I also attended the street dance, and no, I did not dance, even though Counsel DeForest was trying to get me to dance. And, you know, that was before I knew she bench pressed all that. If I didn't know that, I would have danced because I didn't know what she was. So, but it was a great time by all. And I think it's encouraging to know that a lot of people plan their class reunions around the street dance. I will be having one coming up next year. I'm not going to say how many years I've been out of school, but that was one of the things that they said, that it's going to be centered around street dance where it starts that night and then go on to the rest of the weekend. So that's a big event, and a lot of people know about it. So I would say kudos to everyone who had a part in that. I also attended the National Night Out, and I got to ride a fire truck, as Counsel Vandemar said before. And the exciting thing about this is we actually got to go on the call while we were out. So that was kind of exciting to leave with the sirens and red lights going. So I tried to get them to do that when I got in the fire truck, but they wouldn't. So when they got the call, I thought it was just fit that we got to do that. And we also, Counsel Dench and Counsel Haynes, continues our neighborhood walk. We did walk through the college area and just looking at different things and talking to the neighbors about how pleased they are with the city of Beloit, with the code enforcement, and the great things that's going on in the city. So I often like to pass that on, not to toot our horn and say this is what we're doing, but just to let you know what the citizens are saying about the city of Beloit. And that's one of the reasons why we do it, because as we sit here and make decisions, we want to see how they affect the community. So that's one of, that's the real reason why we do it, and that's all the comments that I have. We would move now to the city manager's presentation, and we have none this evening. Item 11 is reports from boards and city officers.
Item 11A, resolution ratifying an application for a $600,000 state trust fund loan from and the issuance of certificates of indebtedness to the state of Wisconsin Board of Commissioners of Public Lands and making certain covenants relating to the Build America Bond program.
Mr. York, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to add that this is not a new loan that the city's applying for. If you recall, the state trust fund loan was part of our financing package that the council authorized back in the spring. And the basic reason for this resolution that's before you this evening is to qualify that loan for the Build America Bond program. And as you recall, the Build America Bond program is one of the federal stimulus programs that's a couple of years old now. And this program will allow us to receive a 35% rebate on the interest that we pay on this debt. And over the course of the 10-year note that we'll be incurring as a result of this loan, the city will save approximately $47,000 in interest expense. And that's really the reason that we're bringing this resolution to you this evening is so this loan qualifies for this program, and so we'll receive the rebate on the interest expense that we incur.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion by Noonan, is there a second? Second by Johns. Any questions? Counsel Noonan?
Mr. York, do we know what the interest rate will have on that is?
It's four and a quarter percent. And that's gross. That's not net of the interest rebate that we receive. So, you know, 35% rebate will certainly reduce that substantially.
Great, thank you.
Counsel DeForest.
I am excited about this rebate potential for us. Is this the maximum amount that we can utilize this rebate for? Is this...
Yes.
Checking. I'm sure, I'm sure you're on top of it, but...
35% is all you can get, I'm afraid.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, there is a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes seven to zero. Item 11B, please.
Item 11B is a final resolution levying special assessments against benefited property for 2021 East Ridge Road.
Mr. Bots, please.
The residents of 2021 East Ridge Road has had, their well has failed, and now they're looking to attach this public water supply. Their address is currently in the town of Turtle, which creates a little bit different situation here, is that in the original resolution, when the assessments were applied to these properties, it was set up to be a hookup fee of a total amount. And what they've asked is that they be specially assessed this amount so that it gets spread out over 10 years. In order to do that, the town of Turtle has to prove that because the levy for special assessment will have to come from the town government. And they have done that. They give us a resolution that they would support this levy special assessment and collect the fees and turn them over to the city. So that's something just a little bit different. So that's something just a little bit different than our normal levy special assessment. And the property owners have signed a letter not contesting any of this, because they totally agree with it. They need the water hooked up in order to have public water supply. And with that, I would ask the council to support this resolution that would levy these special assessments against this property.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Johns, second by De Forest. Any councillor questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item 12, their motion to adjourn. Motion by De Forest, second by Johns. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.